I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
We've got a number of scouts with us tonight and I want to invite them up to lead the pledge. Gentlemen. Just come in front of the podium.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got two presentations tonight. One's a unique one. It's swearing in of a police officer, but it's the first time the officer's a dog. So I've been trying to figure out how it acknowledges and how it signs. So I don't know if it's going to bark or we're going to do a paw print, but Officer Elsasser and K-9 Knox will be sworn in tonight. I'd like to invite the chief up to give a little bit of a background to chief.
Tonight, I'm going to be introducing the newest K-9. K-9 team, I should say. Officer Matt Elsasser and his new partner Knox. They're joining our current K-9 team of Officer Chris Goley and Deuce. And so this is our second team. Officer Elsasser is a 14-year veteran of the Police Department. During his career, he served previously as a school resource officer, a patrol officer. He was a detective assigned to the FBI Violent Crimes Task Force, and now he becomes the next K-9 handler. Knox joins our department as its fourth police K-9. Knox is a Belgian Mallowa, born January 10th of 2018 of the Netherlands. Shortly thereafter, he arrived in the United States where the K-9 Tactical of Chertan, Iowa provided his initial training. Knox joined our Police Department as a police K-9 trainee on June 19th, 2019, and he has been certified by the State of Nebraska in narcotics detection on September 25th, 2019, and certified by the State of Nebraska in patrol, just graduated November 21st, 2019. He's sharp, highly trainable, and energetic for a K-9, and we're very excited. The majority of people are not aware of the enormous amount of personal and professional time that goes into being an effective K-9 team. During this process of training Knox, many have noted the high level of dedication and performance demonstrated by Officer Elsasser. At this time, I'd also like to recognize Lieutenant Jerry Preisen, Sergeant Preston Moss, Officer Chris Goley, along with Matt Elsasser.
Please rise.
I want to recognize these officers for their hard work and unfailing commitment to the department's K-9 program. Lieutenant Preisen, Sergeant Moss, Officer Goley assisted in the drafting of the proposal, the equipment, and the patrol deployment strategy. Officer Goley, along with Officer Elsasser facilitated the selection, purchase, and training of the department K-9s. And Officer Goley is recognized as highly trained in this field. He's a respected expert within the field of police K-9 handlers in the Midwest, and that positively reflects very well on the city of Papillion and the Papillion Police Department. And for these reasons, I think, I commend Lieutenant Preisen, Sergeant Moss, Officer Goley, and Officer Elsasser for their outstanding work that's led directly to now the successful deployment of the second K-9 team. And then finally, I would like to thank City Manager Chris Myers for her support in expanding the program that now covers both of our patrol shift schedules and adds an additional resource and capabilities for keeping the citizens and the officers safe.
We're giving an oath of office to a dog, and I was trying to figure out how to do it, but they are a team, and you basically, I mean, you live with them, and it is an incredible partnership, so I guess we'll do it like a power of attorney, and you'll have the proxy vote. So, Matt, I'll go ahead and give the oath to Knox, and you can respond. Raise your right hand or paw. I, Knox, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially, without fear, favor, or affection, discharge my duties as a police K-9 officer for the city of Papillion, Nebraska. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I'll bear true faith. Loyalty and allegiance to the same. I further swear and affirm that I will protect and serve the citizens of Papillion. Assist my handler in enforcing the law. To search for lost children. To find illegal drugs. To track suspects. And to be a goodwill ambassador for the city of Papillion Police Department. I understand the badge I wear is a symbol of public faith and trust. Charging me to perform my duties impartially. Without favor or ill will. And without regard to race. Religion. Political beliefs. Or aspirations. So help me God. (applause). You want to say anything? Nope. Is Josh here? Josh Charvet coming up for a presentation. So we've got a number of people here. Just real quick about what this is. Josh is with the Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation. When we're doing economic development and we're trying to recruit businesses to the area, if you're sitting down in Florida, you may not know Papillion necessarily or not know the boundaries of it. You just think of Omaha, and it's a big dot on the map. That big dot is generally considered to be about eight counties, 33 communities, and two states. So it's Fremont, Council Bluffs, Papillion, that big bubble. And so we have a partnership with the Greater Omaha Partnership that does economic development for the entire eight-county region. Once a prospect comes in and we start identifying the county where it probably belongs, if it's coming down to Sarpy, then the Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation takes the lead, and Papillion's part of that. And Josh is coming to give us a report on economic development for the third quarter. Josh?
Yes, thank you. Even though I've been with SEDC for almost two years, I haven't had a chance to come out, so thank you for the introduction, Mayor Black, and good evening to all Papillion City Council. So, quick report on third quarter. We'll kind of go, I'll just shoot through these numbers real quick. I think you guys have them all already. But if, hopefully, Andrew mentioned, it's been kind of slow for housing permits over the past two quarters, and we think part of that was just the flooding. It was kind of a long, cold winter. We did kind of catch back up with the single-family, multifamily housing permits this quarter, kind of similar to previous year, previous, last year, so good to see that. I know that was something that we were really watching closely to see how the numbers panned out this third quarter. Down at the bottom, kind of continue to see low, low unemployment. You'll see it's 2.8 percent. It continues to be right around 3 percent. I know I was looking at, the state of Nebraska was 3.1 percent unemployment. Douglas County was 3 percent unemployment, and then the United States was at 3.6 unemployment. So, you know, we are struggling a lot with workforce, with business attraction and retention, but we're not alone. We're seeing that across the country. So, something just, I'm sure, has been said over and over again, but to keep in mind. Kind of do a, see, building permit valuations. Whenever we have a data center building permit come in, it kind of shoots everything through the roof. So, year-to-date, we have over $1.1 billion of building permit valuations so far across the county, so, and obviously, a lot more than just data centers, but another strong quarter. And then, a list of the major valuation projects. You'll see quite a few Papillion ones right there at the top, so put that in a good spot. So we're really excited to see continued growth through the city of Papillion and then also throughout the county. So I'll kind of jump next, give people a couple more moments of that to our project report. So we did land one project this quarter. It was the R&amp;R Building, so they already had a building up out there, but they pulled the permit and started construction on their second building, so that's going to be about another 250,000 square foot building for Spec Warehouse, something that we're kind of desperately in need of in the area. So we'll continue to work with them and work with projects, looking for space, and that's been a huge asset. I know we're seeing more and more projects actually come to town to look at real estate, and we, you know, that's when we show them, and they're always impressed by that. So exciting to see that second one come on board and working as hard as we can to fill them up and get the, get the rest of them put up. One thing that I do kind of want to touch on, you'll kind of see our capital investment in jobs. With that, there was no, there's $10 million capital investment, but no new or retained jobs with that. But one thing that I think this doesn't really point out well is the kind of job multipliers, if you will. I was talking to a concrete company today, and just the construction, especially a lot of the data center works going on. Right now, they have a total of 40 on-staff CDL drivers, and then up to 40 that they can kind of hire, depending on the day. He said today they could hire 50 more CDL drivers, so that's five zero, and that's not uncommon really in any industry that we're talking to. So, it's part of, it's a workforce development problem, part of it's just a numbers game problem, so, you know, as we continue to work talent attraction, you know, workforce development, trying to kind of funnel people into those careers that are the best and highest use of their skills, something to keep in mind, and we've really tried to, you know, put a bigger emphasis on, you know, the trades and how can we focus more on kind of marketing that to parents, to, you know, influence educators. So that's some of the work we're doing in one of our committees. We did open nine new projects this quarter, seven new to market, two existing. I think we had, four of those were manufacturing projects. You can see, we continue to see a lot of manufacturing projects. One thing that we do run into is without, you know, really any rail-served sites in Sarpy County, we're kind of getting mixed off that list pretty quick. One of those active projects is here in Papillion. So I think, fingers crossed, everything's hopefully going to work out with them, and, you know, we'll look forward to hopefully chatting about that in the next, not-too-far future. But other things going on, I know, kind of mentioned business retention, expansion visits. We set a goal of 100 for kind of our two-year, two-year work of plant, or two-year work kind of goals. We have up to 95 so far over the past two years. We were pretty strong last year, so I think next year, we're going to try and figure out a better way to kind of disseminate that information, because I think it's really helpful to get, you know, specific things. I can come up and tell you once a quarter a couple different things that are happening, but if we can get some more kind of organized data to say, these are the specific skills, these are the numbers, these are the type of things people are working for, I think that's something that's going to be really helpful to all the policymakers throughout Sarpy County. This is just membership information, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer that, but that's just kind of a quick rundown on the third quarter.
Appreciate it. Any questions for Josh? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve consent?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gaines. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to see item C4 removed.
C4 is polled. Do we have any proponents on the consent agenda? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on everything except C4.
8A, 0N, S.
Motion passes. Before we jump to C4, we'll do the administrative's report. Ms. Myers.
I felt kind of bad being overlooked. A couple of quick updates. Council retreat and strategic planning session, a reminder that that's scheduled for Thursday, January 16th, at the Natural Resource Center, Chalko Hills. This will be an all-day event beginning at 8:30, and we're hoping to end by 4:30. You should be receiving a SWOT survey in the next couple of weeks as part of the pre-planning process, so please take time to complete that in return, because that certainly will be a topic point for us to discuss. Also, good news, the Recreation Department has sold 329 memberships to the Papillion Landing. What a great start, great job, Lori. We're still on target to open the facility on Monday, January 13th, to the public. Also, Mayor Black and I received news from the Regional District Manager of the Post Office that they have denied our request for our ZIP code changes within our city limits and our ETJ. Bottom line is, Mayor Black and I will be looking at opportunities to appeal that decision. Lastly, I'm sure all of you noticed the wonderful lighting, Christmas lights. It looks like a picture from the Hallmark Channel. Thank you to Laura Schwartz and the Papillion Community Foundation, and certainly to Tony Gowen and his crew, another great winter wonderland event. If you missed it, please make plans to join us next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item C4, Resolution R190237, a resolution to approve an agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation and DOT for Highway 370 traffic signal phasing. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube. Seconded by Councilman Glover. Proponents, Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, I think it's important to talk a little bit about this. Highway 370, obviously, is a major corridor running east-west through the city of Papillion, and I think anybody driving that corridor now already sees some improvements, which I think are definitely safety improvements besides improving congestion, but I understand that this is kind of another phase of that section, and I'm assuming the state will follow through with their commitment in this agreement. So I'd like to hear from Jeff Thompson with regard to what this does and what we're seeing in the future.
Mr. Thompson.
Sure. As you recall, about a year and a half or so ago, the governor announced several hundreds of millions of dollars worth of infrastructure to be put back into the, to the state. As part of that, Highway 370 was targeted as a, what they would consider a smart corridor, which ultimately will allow technologies to talk to cars, and cars to talk back to those technologies. I guess essentially giving you delay times and things like that as far as where you're going and coming from, and how long it may take you considering traffic congestion and whatnot. The first phase was completed this year. They added the preemptive traffic flashing signals all the way along Highway 370, as well as radar control and detection, and new control cabinets. So this is, I believe, the second phase, and I think there's one more if I'm not mistaken.
That answer? Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any other council discussion? Please vote.
8A, 0N, S.
Motion passes. Next is item D1, Ordinance 1865, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code 3526D to increase the amount allowed each year for the annual employee recognition dinner to $50 per each elected official and employee. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item E1, Ordinance 1859, an ordinance to amend Article 38 Wireless Telecommunications Facilities of Chapter 205 of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with small wireless facilities and small wireless facility support poles. The applicant is the city of Papillion. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 1862, an ordinance to amend the Papillion Municipal Code to add a new Chapter 207 entitled "Telecommunications Regulating Small Wireless Facilities." The applicant's city of Papillion. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E3, Ordinance 1863, an ordinance to amend Chapter 9 Boards, Commissions, and Committees of the Papillion Municipal Code regarding the Library Board. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Is Matt here? No. Do you want to give a brief, just for citizen education of what we're doing?
Yes, so what this proposal is, is to rename, there's two parts. The first part is to rename the overall Papillion Public Library, the Papillion Public Library. Right now, it's called the Sump Memorial Library, and now that we're opening a second library facility, this would be the overarching name. We would still keep the Sump Memorial Library for that facility itself. And then the second part of this is to amend a process that was just approved at the last, at the last council meeting, where the mayor's appointments, there wouldn't be the requirement of having two before it moves forward for consideration. As long as there's one name, then Mayor Black can consider that.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E4, Ordinance 1864, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from R1, single-family residential, low-density, to R4, multifamily residential, for the property legally described as tax lot 2, Section 23 Township 14 North, Range 12 East, generally located at 402 East Centennial Road. The applicant's Papillion La Vista Community Schools. It's a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Ordinance 1855, an ordinance to amend Section 205 119 of Article 21, Chapter 205, the Papillion zoning ordinance, the downtown overlay district amendment. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1855? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Seconded by Councilman Stube. Any council discussion? Please vote.
8A, 0N, S.
Motion passes. The next item, we only do once a year, because we've got some scouts and students here. I was talking to the scouts a little bit about the form of government and how it functions, and who fills in for the mayor when the mayor can't be here, and that's the city council president. And tonight, we actually elect the president for the next year. The president's elected amongst, from amongst the eight city council members. It is actually, I think, the only time we can take a closed vote, and sometimes we waive it, sometimes we don't. But is there a motion to open nominations for council president? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Seconded by Councilman Klug. Please vote.
8A, 0N, S.
Motion passes. The floor is open to receive nominations in council discussion. Mr. Glover.
I would like to nominate Bob Stube as next year's president.
Mr. Stube is nominated. Any other nominations? I don't know if it's an auction, going once, going twice, or a last call. Is there a motion to close nominations for council president? Motion by Councilman Sunday. Seconded by Councilman Klug. Please vote.
8A, 0N, S.
There's only one name on the floor, so I don't know if a secret ballot is worth it, but is there a motion to approve Resolution R190233, electing council member Bob Stube as the council president? Motion by Councilman Glover, seconded by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
8A, 0N, S.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Thanks, Bob. And again, for the students, that's a one-year appointment. Council president really doesn't have, I don't think, has any other powers beyond a regular council member, other than they do fill in for the mayor when he can't be here. So if I can't be at a meeting, they'll run it, and if for some reason I die, they'll become mayor. That was pleasant, wasn't it? Item F3, Resolution R190234, a resolution to approve the recommendations from the Limited Community Redevelopment Authority to work with urban waters for Phase 1 and FIRA engineering for Phase 2 of the city-owned parcels within the downtown Papillion redevelopment area, and to authorize city staff to work with the two developers to amend the downtown redevelopment plan. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190234? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Seconded by Councilwoman Klug. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? No council discussion? Please vote.
8A, 0N, S.
Motion passes. And a little bit for the public, again, for education. This has been a really long process, longer than I think a lot of people would want, but it's government, and when we own land, it's a, it's a very slow process. What was authorized tonight is an update of a redevelopment plan to incorporate concepts that these two developers have, and then work with them on negotiating basically the sale of the land and the development concept. So it still has several votes to come back to council to come to fruition, but really, it's the update of a redevelopment plan, so it's more specific to their proposals. Item F4, Resolution R190236, this is both a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit to allow for building additions and parking lot modifications on the property legally described as tax lot 2, located in Section 23 Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located at 402 East Centennial Road. The applicant is the Papillion La Vista Community Schools. This is a public hearing. Are there any proponents? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Yes, hi, Joe Zadina with Lambert-Nerson, 14710 West Dodge. Just here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190236? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilman Stube. Is there any discussion? Please vote.
8A, 0N, S.
Motion passes. Item F5, Resolution R190241, a resolution to approve the posting of the annual occupation tax report on the city website. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190241? Motion by Councilman Sunday. Seconded by Councilman Jaworski. Again, this is to meet a state requirement for some reporting that we do. Are there any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
8A, 0N, S.
Motion passes. Item F6, Resolution R190243, a resolution to approve the city attorney to initiate and pursue legal action against the city of Gretna for violations of the inter-local cooperation agreement dated April 16th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190243? Motion by Councilman Stube. Seconded by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion, I want to, just because it is an unusual item, I want to give a little bit of a comment, mainly for public education. Some might see this as kind of a quick thing that just came out of left field. I actually had that question today, so I want to give a little bit of the background. The entire staff report we'll talk through actually is on our website, so anybody can see all of these documents. Just go to our website, and the entire staff report there. But the background is, I think it was in 2017, late 2017, is when Gretna did the annexation that Sarpy County subsequently sued them for, and that lawsuit is still out there. After that period of time, April of 2019, you'll remember, Papillion and Gretna came to an agreement, on a boundary agreement. We spent a year negotiating that agreement, and both city councils unanimously approved the agreement. Within the negotiations in that agreement were three very specific things that were a major portion of the conversation. One was, there is a map, the industrial sewer map that the county has, that for years has basically, we think, has been inaccurate. We saw this as a prime time to clean that map up, so we both agreed to work with Sarpy County to have them adopt a new map. The next thing, then, is in both of the city's comprehensive plans, we have maps and references to boundaries and areas, and we both agreed, mutually agreed by a very specific date, to have the comprehensive plan updated. And then, the annexed area, a proportion of the annexed area that Gretna did was on our side of the agreed-to boundary, so a natural item in there was they needed to de-annex up to that line, and that had a very specific date as well. So we all negotiated, we believe in good faith. Their lawsuit was out there while we were doing the negotiations, and so we believe everything they agreed to, they believe they had a right to take care of those things. We both worked with Sarpy County. The industrial sewer map has been updated, so that obligation was met. Papillion updated its comprehensive plan, so our obligation was met. Gretna has not updated their comprehensive plan. That date has passed, and they have not done the de-annexation. That date has passed. Administration of both cities have been talking for quite a while about the breach, and when is it going to be updated? When's the de-annexation going to occur? And we basically, we've received some correspondence several times that says, we don't believe now we can de-annex, we Gretna. now we can de-annex, we Gretna. There's been no changes of facts, no material changes, and we're only about sixty days removed from when the deadline's passed. So again, we believe we all negotiated in good faith, and there's been no material changes in facts. So the request really has been, update the comprehensive plan and do the de-annexation we've all agreed to. The dates have passed. Correspondents came back of, we don't think we can de-annex. We've done some research, we believe they can. To try to get the ball moving, we sent a letter November seventh, I believe, and it is in the packet. You can reference the letter, and the public can too. November seventh, we basically sent a letter to Gretna saying, please abide by the agreement. And we're requesting you do that in the next thirty days. And if you don't, the letter does say, the only other option then is probably to pursue legal action to move forward. And so we're getting to the end of that thirty-day period. At the direction of the city administrators, the attorneys on both sides did visit, and message basically came back from Gretna attorney that, no, we cannot de-annex. And so they've got about another week in that thirty-day period. So if that thirty-day expires and no action of anything has been taken, we feel that this is probably the only next logical step to try to get the agreement, to have an abide by the agreement. I don't think it's saying we will file suit. They're still trying to have conversations, but if nothing comes to fruition, this is the authorization to be able to file suit. So, long introduction, background, I think it's very important for education and for the public to know, this has been a long process, negotiated in good faith. We just want everybody to abide by the agreement we all agreed to, and there's been no material change in facts. Mr. Mungard.
Oh, yeah, I guess, I was one of the council members here that voted against that agreement. So I guess, in some respects, I'd be happy to have them breach the agreement, and, you know, so there's no agreement. But that's not the position I'm taking tonight. I'm not happy for a breach of agreement. And as I understand, as you've explained, the only real explanation they're giving us is that they can't de-annex that small part on this, on this side of the interstate, because that would threaten the entire annexation that's in litigation. Well, of course, my reaction to that is twofold. One, well, that was the situation when they made the promise. So to give us that as the explanation, I guess it just leads me to question the good faith of the people who entered into that agreement on the other side. They either didn't know what they were doing, or they didn't intend to keep the agreement in the first place. Gosh, I hope it's not the second. I hope it's neither one for our sister city Gretna. And then secondly, well, if this litigation and the large unusual annexation that they did is standing in the way of just keeping the promise that they made, well, I've dealt with litigation for many, many years, and I know it's easy to make litigation go away. You just agree with what the plaintiff wants you to do. So basically, all they have to do is agree to de-annex and cancel the annexation, like Sarpy County says, they, the law requires them to do in the first place. So I sit here and I think, I don't see any real reason why we're in this position. It puzzles me. But of course, Gretna's not asking me for their, for advice, so I won't give it to them. But I know our, our place is simply to sit here, and whether I agreed with that deal in the first place is beside the point. A promise is a promise, and we Papillians should be known as a place that keeps their promises, and we should be known as a place that we make people keep the promises they make to our citizens. And so I'm going to vote in favor of this regardless of the outcome.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Obviously, I'm strongly in support of this particular resolution, you know, as city staff went through an effort of significant time and effort to come to some agreement that was actually submitted to the city council for approval, which we did. The unfortunate thing is, is that now we are expending city tax dollars for a potential lawsuit. Now granted, we have a city attorney, so our costs are probably not as great as what the city of Gretna is. But the other thing is, is that, you know, the city of Gretna taxpayers are now potentially looking at two lawsuits. One filed by Sarpy County against what I believe is an illegal annexation, and from what I understand, is still ongoing. And I said it before, and I'll say it again tonight, I wholly support, and I hope that Sarpy County follows through with that lawsuit to the final end, and no negotiation is done with them, that essentially, I believe, again, that it's an illegal annexation. And I think it's unfortunate that we've got to the point where we're expending city tax dollars to fight something, an agreement that was approved by both city councils. We have agreements submitted to us all the time, city council members. We had one tonight that I talked about, that Jeff Thompson talked about, which is an agreement with NDOT. And there's an expectation on my part, as a council member, that when we approve and enter into an agreement, that there's a mutual understanding that both parties will commit to that agreement. And so I strongly support our action in this particular case. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Sunday.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I too support this resolution. I think it's disappointing, the explanation we've received. This de-annexation of this triangle of property is but a small part of what they annexed. It wouldn't have, I don't see how it could have any effect, one way or the other, on their overall lawsuit with Sarpy County. And I agree with Councilman Stube that Gretna's position doesn't hold much merit. I might be proven wrong, but I don't think so. I think that was an illegal annexation that they made. But be that as it may, they made a boundary agreement with our council. It was negotiated in good faith. I too voted against it initially, but I support it now because the council supported it, and I think we should and have abided by it. I think it's disappointing, and I think the citizens of Gretna, who are basically good, hardworking, decent, honest people, would be severely disappointed in their own representatives if they knew what was going on. Hopefully, they'll find out now. But I support this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Ingberg.
I also support this resolution. Regardless of what the vote was on the initial agreement, those of us that voted to do the boundary agreement, we certainly didn't go into it believing that what, what we negotiated and the vote we took would be disregarded. You know, your intention when you reach an agreement, obviously, is, there's a vote taken on both, by both bodies, that both entities will honor that and go, and follow the agreement. It's unfortunate that this has occurred, but I think the two key fact, or the one main key fact is, and the mayor mentioned it, is nothing has changed between the time we negotiated the negotiation and signed an agreement. Nothing has changed from that day to today. The facts were the same then as they are now, and here we are, two months past, the due date for Gretna's compliance with the agreement. We met all of our obligations. We honored the agreement we made. It's beyond comprehension to me that government agency or governmental body would knowingly sign an agreement. And the only, the only thing that I can infer is, perhaps, either they were ignorant about what they were doing, or they had no intention of abiding by the agreement to begin with. Either way, it's not pleasant, but the second one especially is not pleasant. I certainly would never want to be part of a governing body that went into an agreement knowing that they had no intention of complying. So I'll support this, and hopefully, it'll get resolved before we reach that thirty-day period.
Ms. Klug.
Thank you. When you enter into a contract, into an agreement, you have to rely on both parties are moving forward, that both parties know what they're doing, and that they intend to follow through with it. Many of you have already mentioned that nothing has changed, so it saddens me that we are at this point, but it is truly the only thing that we can do to move forward and fulfill the, both sides of the contract by saying, yes, we will follow through with it, even if we have to request the other city do what they said they would do to begin with.
Thank you. Any other council comments? I would say, in some of the conversations, if there's a material change in facts, facts can change, and we can amend things, but there's been no presentation of any changed facts. That's what we're looking for then, is just abide by the agreement. No other council discussion? Please vote. Next is committee reports. I believe the Finance Administration Committee met tonight. Do we have a report on that? Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. We had quite a few items with a lot of material tonight at our F and A meeting. I'll make it as brief as I can. The one I'll report on the most is the first item we discussed, which is involving the planned landing, GMP. Staff basically reviewed where we're at with the landing and the financing at this point in time. As many of you know, there is contingency funds included, which is normal for this kind of a project, and we're now doing, building Phase One. And if you recall, what we're doing, what we were planning to do in Phase One was completing all of Phase One, with the exception perhaps of the softball complex. And it was kind of a, see if it was something that we could include and be able to afford to complete or not. Well, pleasantly, reports that there's three things that have changed to the city's benefit, one of which is, the city received a grant of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's a cost savings thus far in the construction of the facility itself, and there's been a savings in the contingency plan as well. With all those three things being combined, there's a five-point-seven million dollar savings to this point. Well, the committee discussed whether or not perhaps we should take part of that contingency fund and complete Phase One, which is to do the softball complex, which if you recall, we all were planning on doing, once we reached far enough in the project to see financially where we stood. And so we're going to, we recommend unanimously that it'll come before the council very soon, so they can begin work to use that small portion of the savings, as we always intended, and do the softball complex, which will allow us to complete Phase One. I should mention too, I guess, that reviewing the conservative estimates and everything at the time we entered into the construction of the community center, the landing, everything is looking very well. The way it was financed is doing better than even we considerably expected, so that was good news. The second item briefly was a field utilization guideline amendment put forth by the Recreation Department. Basically, what it amounts to is a refining of, you may recall, some time back, the city made some refinements to the guidelines to make it more equitable for users and for private citizens as well, that were perhaps part of a group or organization. So we utilized our fields the best we could and more efficiently. All these guideline changes, which will also come before the full council, we recommend support, consideration of, simply utilizes a more refined and more realistic than its previous changes even, that will allow us to primarily eliminate fields that are reserved in bulk and find out that no one's using them. The goal is to, if there's a field that's reserved and it's not used, that it be turned back over to the rec department, so they can use it, provide it to other users, rather than just sit idle. And part of that process is going to be, if you, if you reserve space on a, on a, on a field, if you choose not to notify the rec department that you're not going to use it, and turn back the date, then it will cost you the same as if you did use it. So that will eliminate some of those issues and help us utilize the fields that we have more efficiently. So that'll come back to the council. Lastly, it was the master fee schedule, primarily dealing with the landing, with the community center, primarily just to clean up of the language that was in the previous master fee schedule for the facility. I'll just point out one thing that I think is a, is a really positive change. There'll now be offered a monthly subscription or usage fee. That way, we may have people, for example, that are not here in the wintertime, that would utilize the facility, and we could accommodate more people more efficiently by doing it that way. So that monthly fee will be now available. I think it'll benefit the citizens that want to use it. And there was other cleanup changes, primarily the language. That'll come before the council as well. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I don't think any other committees have met. Do we have any comments from the floor? We've got some students here. If you're a student, you get to come up and introduce yourself and let us know why you're here. And we will wait, so you've got to start coming up in line. And as they are coming up, I will just, again, with the scouts, that was Troop, both PAC and Troop three fifty-nine from St. Columbokil, and then PAC sixty was out with us. So thank you, gentlemen.
Hi, my name is George Gibler. I'm from Papio South High School, and I'm here for an applied learning project. So yeah, we're having fun.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Cara Philamaly. I go to Papio South, and I'm doing the applied learning project, too.
I'm Shira Stewart, and I go to Papio South, and I'm here for a government class.
Thank you.
We'll stay here all night?
We'll wait.
My name is Peyton Anthony, and I'm here for a government class at Papio South.
I'm Alex Eby, and I'm here for that reason, too.
I'm Mason Berger, here for government as well.
We've got another one in the back? All right. We've got some back there. Nope, got them all. Go back for class discussion, though. There were three very unique things that happened tonight that typically don't happen. One's the election of a city council president. Again, that's part of secession planning that only happens once a year. Swearing in of a canine dog, I've never done that before, so that's unique, but that dog is an official police officer. And so that is, it's actually certified as a police officer. And then discussion of a lawsuit is a very serious action, and I think that's probably the first time we've done that in about ten years. So a lot of unusual things tonight to take back to applied learning and government. Council comments? Any updates from council? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks.
I wanted to make a comment about the signs down in downtown, the new signs. It was amazing to me, I left the office down, talking to Lori, and I stopped at the stop sign, and the traffic on both sides of the street was actually stopping at the, at the signs early on, and this was yesterday, because they really weren't understanding exactly what it was. But I will tell you one thing, it slowed the traffic down immensely. And obviously, that's what it was designed to do, and hopefully, it continues to slow the traffic down. But people were very aware of the signs and very hesitant to move through any, any more than about fifteen mile an hour or so. So if they continue to do what I saw yesterday, it was, it was well worth the money that we invested to slow that traffic down, so.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Just the last couple of weeks, not a lot. I went to the National League of Cities Conference, and then attended the Downtown Business Association. A major part of the update that I gave A major part of the update that I gave the Downtown Business Association was a little bit on the redevelopment that we just approved last night for the redevelopment plan, giving them that update, and then also sharing a little bit about what Public Safety has been talking about, about downtown. And the main update I gave them was that the Public Safety Committee had originally met, had made some recommendations, staff had worked those recommendations, and when staff started molding the recommendations, we made sure that came from a public safety perspective, it came from a planning perspective, and it came from an engineering perspective. So we had all disciplines looking at the recommendations. And I think it was last week or the week before, staff gave an update to Public Safety Committee on what their findings were and the direction, and Public Safety Committee then, direction was basically continue forward, do it, to do a professional traffic engineer study of the recommendation of that whole downtown area. I think the indication was that'd be back in about maybe six weeks or so, and then at that point, Public Safety will meet again and basically give direction. Most of what comes out of that will have a cost impact, so that will come to the full council for a vote. So it's kind of where we are, is in the traffic study of the recommendation. But the one immediate thing was the placement of the signs in the crosswalk. So that was an update I gave the Business Association. We had a United Cities meeting this week, not a lot of major activity, got a little few updates on some of the interim studies that the legislature's working on. Those are winding down, they're getting ready for the next session. Biggest thing right now with the next session is probably going to be the Nebraska Advantage, the reauthorization of the economic development incentive package. Right now, that is set to sunset in 2020. If that sunsets without a new program, Nebraska will be the only state in the nation without an economic development incentive package. And so they're working really hard to approve that, but that's in conflict with the senators that want property tax reduction. Those two senator groups are conflicting, so they've been working over the summer on what's an agreed-to package. We've been working very close with that group to make sure there's transparency in there. That's been a big issue of ours for a long time, is understanding the impact locally of those economic incentives, and we believe we have some good information in there. But the main update we got from the United Cities is some of that could be in jeopardy because of the Schwab-Tiedia Ameritrade merger. With the Schwab-Tiedia Ameritrade merger, that's going to re-energize some conversations about the benefits of economic incentives, and depending on where senators end up with that, that could change the package. And if they change the package, maybe some of the things we've been fighting for could be a risk, so we're going to stay really close to that. That's probably the biggest thing. I would say if there's any items that you care about at a legislative level that maybe we need to be looking at or advocating for, this would be a good time to be bringing those forth. We couldn't do anything probably in this next session because it's the end of the biennium, the end of the two-year, but it takes quite a bit of work to formulate legislation, educate senators, get them on board, find advocates for the next session. So if there are things that are important to you, share those with us. One thing I will share that I think we're going to look at, Chief Lyons and I have been talking about, Nebraska is unique in the nation when it comes to pedestrian crossings. And there are some funny parts of the, of the law from an enforcement perspective, and so we're having some conversations with some other cities, both the law enforcement, and then if the law enforcement comes together, then we'll probably take that as a United Cities issue to try to advocate for some better legislation around pedestrian crossings and be more in line probably with most of what the other states are doing, so stay tuned on that. Only other real thing is I went and visited with Tara Heights Elementary 3rd grade today, and then just the last piece of recognition, Fire Chief Bill Bowes. He participated in the senior softball team for Nebraska and was named the 2019 Nebraska Senior Softball Manager of the Year. Bill's been doing that a long time, and Tori Pantalian, I think, is on that team as well, so thanks for doing that. Any other updates from council or discussion? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Stube. Please vote. Mr. Ingberg. We are adjourned.